Are we all set now?
I think so.
Thank you.
Want me to read the precursor?
That'd be great, thank you.
You're welcome. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspended certain decisions of open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via nonparticipation. The only person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by going to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of screen, type in meeting ID 88636892159, password is 046963, hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note: To join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call and telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV Charter, Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, they'll be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, they'll be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectmen@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy and public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is the 5th of February. This is a special Select Board meeting for the purpose of interviews for the town accountant. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. So I just want to take one minute and just talk about the process here. So we have two applicants, and I believe John Kowal is waiting to come into the room. We have nine questions for them, and so right now, because John is not currently resident of Southampton, he was very involved in the beginning of the interviews for this position, and he's been very gracious in offering to be part of it tonight. But as a non-resident, and already having given his resignation, which we'll be reading next Tuesday, his role here is as a consultant, so he's a non-voting member. We haven't checked references on either of these people. We can decide to have an open discussion afterwards. We can discuss, we can hold off and just interview them and have a follow-up discussion on Tuesday since it's on the agenda. But everything would be contingent upon the contract, references, and other, you know, checking of backgrounds and so forth. So just wanted to mention that. There are nine questions, and there's three Select Board members here, so we'll, myself and then Francine and Chris, and we'll just rotate three times. And then the last question is, what kind of questions do you have for us? Does that sound all right?
Fine. Alright, sounds good. So, I wonder, do you want to go in?
So me, Francine, and then Chris.
Okay.
Alrighty?
Okay.
John, thanks so much for being here.
You're welcome. Ready for me to let John Kowal in?
We are.
Okay.
There we go. Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yep. Hi there, how do you do? My name's Maureen Groden. I also go by Reenie. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. And then the rest of the folks on the line here can introduce themselves, and we'll start in.
Great, thank you.
Chris Valls.
Francine Tishman.
Ken Cole.
Ken.
Hi, John.
How are you, John? Yes?
Good, yourself?
Good, thank you.
Hi, John, how are you today?
Very glad, thank you very much.
All right, are we all successfully unmuted?
Could be.
All right. So, John, thank you very much for being here. We're just going to go along, and we have nine questions for you. I do believe that you were provided with these questions beforehand?
Yes, I have them, and thanks, yep.
Okay, good. So I'll just start, for the benefit of anybody else that's watching, and I'll just start by asking you to please tell us a little bit about yourself, and why would you like to be the town accountant for the Town of Southampton?
Sure. Well, my name's John Kowal. I live in East Granby, Connecticut, here with my wife and two daughters, who are currently students at Western New England College and Westfield State. I have ties to Southampton. I grew up in Southampton. I still have my mother who lives there, and my brother and his family live there. Southampton is, in many ways, I still consider home. I'm also a...
John, can I just stop you for one second?
Sure.
This background noise, is there somebody that has a TV or something in the background?
Let me mute myself and see if that does...
I think that did it.
Oh, that did it.
Okay, sorry about that.
Hard open, sorry, no.
John Kowal, yeah, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, so you're...
No, that's fine. Yeah, just, I'm a, you know, I grew up in Southampton. I own a piece of property in Southampton, not a, it's a building lot. My mom and brother live there, so Southampton is, in many ways, I still consider my home. I, my education, I went to University of Massachusetts, graduated with a Bachelor's of Business Administration, and then I got my Master's Degree at Western New England, used to be college, now it's Western New England University. I've been working in the accounting field, one way or another, for over 27 years. My last 18 years has been with a company called Connecticut Attorney Title Insurance Company. It's a small but growing title insurance company where, in all the New England states, it was, and being a smaller company, at one point, there was, in the accounting department, there was a CFO, and it was a very, CFO, a controller, an assistant controller, that's what I was and am, and an accounts payable and accounts receivable person. And given the size of the department, I was involved in a lot of different, I had, I was able to be involved in a lot of hands-on functions between accounts payable, receivables, budgeting processes, all types of filings for all sorts of, a lot of different, you know, state, local, town filings. And I just kind of looked at the, I wasn't actively looking for a job, but just once in a while, I looked through the Indeed and things like that, and I always look, I always look at things around East Granby, and I always look around things for Southampton, and I saw the town accounting job, and it just interests me. I was lucky enough to get an interview with Ed and John, and I was even more interested in the position after talking to them.
Yes, and what part of it appeals to you? Is it because of your ties to Southampton? Is it the idea that you're sort of, you know, in an office with just an assistant? Or what part of it appeals to you?
Yeah, I mean, a big part of it is being Southampton. A big part of it, it would be a, it would be a different field of accounting for me. That would be a challenge. I do like the idea of the smallness of it. And I'm interested in the town in general, and, you know, all that together, it just sparked my interest.
Oh, good. All right, thanks. Francine?
Okay, John? What are some of the skills you bring that you believe would make you a good match for the job in Southampton? And then there's a Part Two here.
Sure.
Is this a position that you believe, that you feel you can grow in professionally, learn additional skills, and expand your accounting knowledge?
Sure. In the first part of that, I think I have extensive budgeting. I sort of head the budgeting process for our company. We have, oh God, we have like eight, eight branches, and we also have department heads at our home office. So we're probably talking with, talking, dealing with the budget for about, oh, 15 individuals when it's all said and done. And I've been very instrumental in not only being able to show them, like, past history to help them come up with their budget numbers, but also, you know, answer any questions that they might have, and it's a very collaborative effort. I mean, given my time there, it's, that's been a big advantage. I think people trust me, and we've just had a very nice working relationship. So it looked like, you know, budgeting and reporting is, you know, at least from what I understand of the job, seems like to be a significant portion of it. And I think that's one of my strong suits, is communication, is collaborating, is getting along with people. I like, I like to believe I have good people skills. Maybe that's where other people decide, but I, I like to believe that that's one of my strong points. And the second part of your question was, what would I have to do? Well, you know, municipal, to a certain degree, there's definitely crossovers, like, if you understand accounting, you can, you can get there to municipal accounting, although there is a lot of differences. But I was, to prepare myself, I've had a little background in it. I've been involved in our town's budgeting, I've just been involved with it just from an interested citizen point of view, so I know a little bit about it, you know. But to prepare myself, just to know something, I went on YouTube and had, watched a couple of videos, and I could pretty much start to, I'm not saying that I would have, I'm not saying I'm some municipal accounting star already, but I mean, even watching that much, I started to put things together. And a lot of it involves, like, vocabulary. The concepts are the same, the vocabulary's a little different, you know, there's the funds, I understand, general fund, and, and those are things that I, I find interesting. And I think that with a little bit of work, well, a lot of work, I can get myself up to speed, and, and that would be, but that's a big challenge, and, but it's something I am very interested in pursuing.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number three, and of course, another two-part question. I think we have trouble being concise, maybe, maybe that's our...
That's okay.
All right. Okay, so describe a specific work experience that you've had where your organizational and your interpersonal skills have contributed to a successful outcome, and at the same time, describe a time where you wish you would have done things differently.
Oh, sure, yep. I've had both.
We all have.
We, last year, we decided to change our whole chart of, well, our expense side of chart of accounts, because we were feeling that a lot of the people, a lot of the stakeholders, a lot of the branch managers really weren't, I could explain what goes into the categories, what sort of expenses are supposed to go in there, but they weren't very clear. And we also kind of wanted to change the chart of accounts so it more closely reflected the statutory reporting that we have to do. Insurance companies have a lot of statutory, they're very heavily regulated, we have the, and we wanted to make sure that these expense chart of accounts, one, were more clear for the, our stakeholders, and two, made it easier for us when we, when we did our statutory filing. So that was very complicated in a way, because we, you would have, a lot of times, the accounts wouldn't, they would be bucketed expenses, but then we were sort of breaking up the bucket more, so, to make it more transparent. But when the people were trying to do it, at that point, when people were trying to do their budget, they were used to the old way, and you weren't really comparing apples to apples. It was, there was close, but there'd be changes. So that was hard, because you would, we had, all our information was based on the old, the old chart of accounts, all the, all the past information that they had, and then we're saying, okay, hey, guys, fill out this budget with this, with these new, you know, these new costs. And it was like, but, once again, you know, and not only was I very helpful in being the person where you say, okay, this is our new account, what, what sort of matched up what in the past? So I was very good at that, and I was able to explain it to our guys, and, and not only that, then our system, then we had to get it into the system, and that meant all the new accounts, and validating them, and getting, and then getting the budget into the, and that was right in the middle of the COVID thing too, so I was doing it at home. And it was, it was quite a, quite a process, but I mean, basically persevered and got it done, you know, and I was pretty, I was very proud of that achievement. It was, it was difficult, but we did it. Something that hasn't worked out as well as I would have hoped. I, we, we have, not only do we have the two insurance companies, but we have all these little subsidiary companies that are not insurance companies. And it's, so it's all these, and in many cases, we have a lot of intercompany charges going to and fro, you know, I guess, not unlike some of the funds that you guys have. But it used to be, everybody who had their own company, like, I, I'm responsible for, I think it's either three or four companies that I do the bookkeeping for. I would figure out the intercompanies and work it out that way, but we decided to try to have a person do the intercompanies for everybody, excuse me, and it just hasn't worked out that well, because the person really doesn't know the businesses that, like, we do, if, you know, they would if they worked on them, but they didn't. And it was, it was sort of my idea to kind of like do that, and, I don't know, it, it seems like it made more, things more complicated than, than easier, so that was sort of a fail. But it was, but it, but it wasn't a total fail, because our CFO has, he's the only one that can transfer funds between all the different companies, and he didn't want to have, like, everybody, oh, do this, do this, this. He did want to have it, just a brief thing, all right, that's, that's, what do I have to move? And just, so it did work in that way, but I don't know, if we do it again, I don't think I would have, I would have pursued this.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, so the next question, John, is, what is your level of experience, again, with municipal accounting, and how would you go about improving your knowledge of municipal accounting? You did answer that to some degree.
Yeah, you know, right. Like I said, I looked at my note here, limited but growing, and I did, I, how would I go about it? I would do, I mean, nowadays, you really can learn so much online. It's amazing. And I was happy, you know, at an hour, I'm watching an hour video, but I was putting things together, and, and I also noticed down there, there's all kinds of resources. Indeed had one. And, you know, I can start to put those things together, and I get an idea. In the, in the beginning, you're kind of, you're, you're kind of like, you're, I'm using my gap accounting to kind of, what are they, what are they getting at here? And it's almost like, you know, when you learn, when you learn Spanish, I never got to the point where I could think in Spanish, you know, but, but I mean, you make these, you're making these conversions in your mind, and yes, there's, there's some differences, but there's also a lot of similarities. And I can see myself starting to put it together. So I would do more of that, self-study, if, you know, I'm fortunate enough to get the job, you know, before being hired, I would work hard to, had a working knowledge of it anyway, then I'd have to come in and actually see your guy's systems and all your different accounts and things like that, obviously. And I know, I noticed that the job said that you should get a certification of Massachusetts Municipal Accountants and Auditors Association within three years. I imagine that's something you can probably study for, and I would think that that would probably go a long way in helping me, you know, become more competent. But I really, I, at this point, you know, I don't think I would even try for a job if I didn't think I could kind of be successful, so, especially about this other place for 18 years, so I think I can do it, and it'll take work, and that's basically what everything does. But there's nothing, there's no concept there that, you know, I don't think I can, that I won't be able to grasp, you know?
Good, thanks.
Okay. This touches a little bit, the next question, on the one you just answered, but maybe you can expand on a little bit more. Which of your previous experiences, though not in municipal government, do you feel most closely resembles this position, and why?
Yeah, I mean, from the, from the right up, right, it, and from just going to my town meetings, you know, I think, I think, yeah, well, I would think like, most of the would be the budgeting, the reporting, and the state and town filings and federal filings that I have to do. I would think those probably are the ones, the experiences that I do have that would probably, I mean, at least from my understanding of the position, would probably come into play the most.
Okay. All right. Yep. So how do you envision your role interfacing with other departments? Do you kind of expect all departments to be held to the same standard? And if so, how do you maintain adherence to that, to those standards?
Right. Well, I think, first of all, you have to understand the standard yourself, so I mean, that would be some work, and see what those standards are. And yes, and then, without a doubt, I mean, I imagine at a certain point, you know, we'll develop, I'm hoping, friendships with some of these folks, and, but that, will that affect how I, right, if there's standards to be followed, they have to be followed, friends or not, I mean, it's, you know, you know, you know, so yeah, I mean, everybody will be held to, including me, to the, to the standards that we're supposed to meet.
Okay.
Okay, so the next question is, accounting supports each department, which is headed by independent decision-makers, department heads. You don't have a decision-making role, but you become aware that a department head did not follow protocol. How would you correct it and make certain that the same situation didn't occur again?
Right. And, you know, you can't expect people to follow the protocol if you don't know the protocol, so I would have to make sure that I understand what the protocol is, and be able to explain it to people. You know, I also imagine that if some, it depended on how important of a, or how big of a thing was, was, what protocol was broken. I mean, I suppose if it's, you know, hopefully, if it's a minor, you can just kind of, hey, let's work it out, and, and, you know, and, you know, hopefully, 90% of the time, people are willing to discuss and to compromise and to, you know, come to an understanding. And then, you know, if it's something large, or, you know, something that's really going to hurt our town, well, then you have to kind of bring it up the chart of command, but, you know, you hope you don't have to do that. I just, a little example, I, what job before this, I worked at Cigna Retirement Investment Services, that was in Hartford. They ended up getting bought out by Prudential. Anyway, I was in charge of the accounting for a little entity out in Dubuque, Iowa, and Cigna got a grant, because of the, being in Dubuque, I guess. And I was sort of like pressured by somebody kind of high up to report this as a negative expense, but I knew that that had like tax implications, and, and I, you know, I kind of, I said, well, I really can't do that, I, you know, I, I have to kind of count it as a grant, and there was a little pushback, but we talked about it, and then I think she ended up understanding, because she, she cared about the expense line, not the revenue line, because it really wasn't a revenue-producing place, but, I mean, that's how I thought it had to be done, and, and then that's how it was done, and I think, you know, she came to understand that, and we, and, you know, that was uncomfortable, like, because that's somebody, you know, almost telling you what to do, but I didn't, I knew that wasn't the way to report it. So that's a little example of, of something that I was able to, you know, and it ended up being fine, you know? She didn't fire me, so it was okay.
Okay. The accountant position is central to town government. It requires familiarity with laws, regulations, attention to detail, organizational skills, confidentiality, and adherence to operational deadlines. That sounds familiar to you, I'm sure. Can you speak to your skills in these areas?
Yeah, well, really, I, I do my job with very little, I suppose I should be able to after 18 years, right? There's very little supervision that I, that I require, and I have a lot of deliverables to a lot of different people, and I have to always balance things, and, you know, sometimes it's easy, because with the, with the insurance company that's highly regulated, every state you're in, you have to file all kinds of documents, usually in March, and then there's a little less to rest, but when you pay your premium taxes in these states, there's all kinds of other additional things that they want, usually money, but, so, but they, but that's due like March 1st, so a lot of these times, their deadlines are set up for you, you know? And that's, you know, that's, that's easy. It's trying to balance the other ones with those things, that's difficult, and I'm, I'm very good at it, and self-motivated. Very rarely do I drop the ball on something, and that's just being, that just, that, you know, you have to be organized, you have to know what you have to do, and then you have to do it. So I feel that's a strength of mine.
Okay, thank you.
So, lastly, John, as you've read, this is a 30-hour-per-week position. So do you feel that the schedule is going to work for you in the long term, or is this something where you think you might require additional hours to, to want to remain in the position in the future?
No, right, I mean, no. I think that's fine, and I knew, I knew that going, going into it. I mentioned earlier, I have two kids that I still have to get through school, but, you know, I plan to work for a long time, and I, I feel like, you know, originally, I'm thinking, well, maybe another three years here, and then another, and then maybe at a, an opportunity, something similar to this. But by the same token, these opportunities don't come up very often, and so, no, I understand that, that's what it is, and, you know, it's, at this stage of the game, this is not going to be a stepping stone for me to, you know, to go to Westfield or something, or whatever, you know, this will, this will be my, you know, this will be my job, and, you know, so, so yeah, I'm, answer your question, yes, I'm aware of it, and that's fine.
Okay, thanks.
So, John, what questions do you have for us about the town, about the position, about anything, actually?
Sure. Now, is there anybody doing the, the job now, or?
Yes, we have, we have an interim accountant currently.
Oh, okay. All right. And how about, is there anything that reports, or, or something explained, or things like that, that you... had always wanted that you couldn't have? Or has people been able to meet your guys' request as to, has there ever been something, gee, why can't we do this? Or why can't we do that? Have you ever had that?
Well, I'll answer, then I'll ask everybody else to answer, including John. So we get revenue and expense reports. And, you know, I think there's been a little bit improvement that could happen with the reports. I think, you know, I would like them to be more current or detailed or, you know, a number of things, especially on the revenue side. There's just been some things that we could, I think there could be improvements. You know, every, every year is marked by, you know, challenges. You know, last year we had COVID. We had drastic state reductions in our income across the board. A couple of years before that, it was an override approved budget. So it's a challenge on the fiscal side. There's no question about it. So having good current reports and having, you know, as much import as possible on the accounting side is, is a huge help. And having it be current helps us a lot. And I think there have been some gaps in that. So. How about you? Francine has been a liaison to the Finance Committee and was a previous Finance Committee member. And we also have our Chair of the Finance Committee with us also. So please speak up, Francine.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention that it's been my understanding, because I've asked for things perhaps in a different format that for me would make it more comprehensible. And I think maybe to others as well. And you'll, you'll see that when you actually see the system. And my, the explanation given to me was this is, this is how the state has set up the system, and this is how we're required to do it. So I'm assuming that that's the correct answer. I would love to see more intelligible reports, user-friendly reports, I guess, is what I want to say. Not from an accounting perspective, but from a user's perspective. I think that would assist, I think, the people on the Select Board, and it might be beneficial also to the department heads whose budgets they're managing.
Well, I've always felt that way with, like, when I go with, deal with the branch managers, that, that's, that's, right, I, I'm not the type that, so, oh, you should understand this, you know, it's, that, that's not what, I don't understand, they're the moneymakers and they're, they're, they're our, I don't understand everything they do by any stretch of the imagination. And, you know, the information's only valuable if it helps you guys make decisions and see what's going on. And I don't know, there may be a certain, it may be both, there may be a certain, maybe you have to present it a certain way. But it's hard to imagine that there couldn't be additional reports that sort of break down the most important things that you guys want to see. And I'd be very, you know, at, at the end of the day, it's information. If it's information for you guys to make your decisions, well, then, you know, it'd be my job to not force you to look at this and figure it out. It'd be, it would be to, you know, present something that makes sense to you.
It's not that it doesn't, it's just, it could be, and you would get a better picture if the format were different. But if this is the system that the state requires that we use, and like I said, I, I, that's what I understand, I would love to see them, make some changes in their system, is what I'm trying to say here. But you'll, you'll see, you'll, you'll take a look at it, you'll see, you'll understand.
Sure.
Chris, you want to add to that at all?
No, I think that, you know, that, that captures it. I'll, I'll let Ken say something if he'd like to. Yeah.
Yeah, Ken is our representative and Chair of Finance.
Oh, hi, Ken.
Ken, you, Ken's muted.
Unmute yourself, Ken. There you go.
Yo. Okay. How's that? All right. Nice to meet you, John. We, I guess I would say that, you know, we as a Finance Committee pretty much are all new members. And we're in a situation where we have the budgeting process that is already behind schedule. And we're already getting inquiries as to where are we and where are we going? And it's, it's a situation where we really can't make decisions without reportings. And, and, and I know it's a difficult situation now because, you know, the incumbent has left, we're still in the process of trying to get somebody on board, yet the challenge just becomes deeper for all of us. And I'm not just speaking for the Finance Committee. But the challenge becomes that much more deeper, and I think much more deep. But the issue right now is, is, you know, getting a handle on just where we are. And that's, that's, you know, that's going to be a burden for, for the the person that's being hired and the people that are trying to shed a light on.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, so it's a bit of a, yeah, well. Yeah. And then you see like,
Situation, John, there's no question.
Yeah, it, it, it does seem unique. And it's like, you know, if somebody, I'll be trying to get up to speed, you know, if I'm, if I'm the one picked. But I do not have the municipal accounting experience. Like I say, I could, and I don't have, you know, but I, I, I think I could get us there. But I mean, it's, it, it, it's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to say that I could jump in and, and, and do it, you know, perfectly in the beginning. But all I could do is say is I would be, I'd be very willing to jump in and give it my best shot. And I think given my past history, I could, you know, ease it up for you guys. But yeah, it's, 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 it's too bad that it's a little bit of a, it's, it's too bad that it's, hey, it's just the way it is. It's a COVID, COVID world, you know? Everybody's, everybody's, when we first started working at home, I was like a complete disaster, you know, but we got through it. And, you know, so it wouldn't, so this job probably wouldn't be anything different. That's my only concern is I want to get, I, I, I would have to be confident that I could get up to speed with, with what's, what's, what's necessary. How about the person that's doing it now? Do, do they have much experience? Or is it just, is it just?
They're also learning, John. They're, you know, they've been, Ed spent quite a bit of time getting that person up to speed in order to keep things going. So it's been a challenge. But, you know, last year, we had a very difficult year between COVID, between uncertain numbers for the state. We ended up passing a month-to-month budget for a while, which is what we were, had to do. It's wasn't unique to our town. That's just the way things had to go with COVID. We had a Finance Committee where we didn't even have, right now, we have a Finance Committee that might be new, but very qualified, very committed people that, so this year, we at least are a little bit better off with having at least a Finance Committee. Last time, we had a husband and wife team that were on the Finance Committee and left together. So that didn't, you know, that caused some challenges. So anyway, we have a budget process and bylaw. And so when you mentioned about being a little bit behind, we're trying very hard to stay on track with that, with Ed sending out Excel spreadsheets. I also want to mention that Ed has been with us for three years and will be able to help out. We have a treasure collector, Jen, who has been tremendously helpful. So, you know, it's, we just face each challenge as it comes and try as best we can to keep things going. I mean, that's been the story for, you know, where I work and for most places. We're in unprecedented times and we happen to be in a big disadvantage with the folks that have left. But it's the world I've been living to where I am. We just have to do the best we can.
Right. And it's just what it is, what it is. And I could promise you, could I promise you I'd be successful? I, I have a good feeling that I would be. I could, the only promise I could make, give you is that I would try, I would try my very best to make it a success. And if you do that, typically, things work out. And I would take it, you know, seriously and be dedicated. I have my whole working career. And I think we could make it work. We'd make it work.
What other questions do you have about the position, about the town, or any of the committees? Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, well, Ed kind of filled me in on some of the, like, do you have any idea how many, like, I, I, like, you have your general fund? Do you have any idea how many funds there are right now?
Ed, do you want to answer that?
The general fund makes up probably seventy-five to eighty percent of what, you know, what we have. But there are other funds that don't fall within that, you know, general fund, whether they're expendable trusts, whether revolving funds. Yeah, capital stabilization, we have operating stabilization. I'd really have to go through and
No, 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 no. But no, no. Just trying to get an idea as to, and how many, how many, and, and, I think I did tell me, but an idea of how many different stakeholders or departments there are, like transportation or?
Well, we've basically got thirteen departments, but we also have boards and committees on top of that. So when you roll all that in together, we're probably talking about close to thirty.
Wow, so that's a lot.
Yeah, as you know, growing up in the town, I mean, we have the local school, and we also have the regional school. That's a whole budget in, you know, school transportation and state funding and all that. And then, of course, Police Fire Highway and Library, Senior Center, COA.
Fire Department, probably.
Yep, yep. Police Fire Highway. We have an EMD right now on CARES Act funding. And then the boards and committees have budgets, Conservation Commission, Finance Committee. So many of them are totally volunteer without a budget, and some are revolving funds. So it's, it adds up to be a good number of departments and funds.
Okay.
I just wanted to give John Martin, I apologize, John, I didn't get a chance to give you a chance to just answer the question previously about, you know, what, you know, from a financial reporting standpoint, are there things that you would want to have from an accountant? Or did you want to say something about that?
Yeah, I don't know if it would be directly from a financial reporting. But because of the financial reports, I think what we lacked a little, and what we really need is the person that's in there that can communicate equally with all the department heads and explain to them the expenses, the revenues, and work with the individuals to answer all their questions during the budget process and also during the budget year, rather than just, you know, deal with certain ones. I think there's a lot of department heads out there that really need a leader on the financial end when it comes to budget. And I think this person needs to be that person.
And I'm that person now at my company, but that comes with, because I was there for eighteen years, that certainly helps. But, you know, I think the, those skills, I, I do believe I, I have those skills to communicate with anybody. I, you know, no, it's not the years of being like intimidated by somebody or, all that is gone. That's, that doesn't happen anymore. So I mean, it's like, you know, not afraid to talk to anybody and, and not shy anymore. And so, you know, and just, you know, have a general interest in the person and, you know, help them do their job. So I mean, you take it, you, you go into it with that attitude. And, you know, maybe I can start to build up some of the trust and things like that, that I've built up at this place over the years.
Yeah, that's great. I, I agree with John. I think getting, you know, just having someone be able to provide, you know, support. There's a lot of, you know, people that might be department heads may not be experts in the financial end of things, you know, managing a library or, you know, a DPW or whatever else. And then there's grants on top of that and different, you know, things. We just got through, you know, two full rounds of CARES Act funding. But I just want to know too, that there's a lot of good things that are going in town. You know, we feel like we're, you know, have to be reactionary to a lot of different things that happened. Obviously, the worst of all, the pandemic. But, you know, there's a lot of, we have two new committees in town that a lot of interest is a new IT committee. And so there's a group of very smart young folks that are helping on the IT end of things that have incredibly rich background. We have a big interest in preserving open space. And so we have a new open space committee that's very, very interested in looking at parcels and educating the public about conservation opportunities and that sort of thing. So there's a lot of people, I mean, this is a beautiful town, and most of us, most of us feel, you know, fortunate to have landed here if we weren't raised here. And so I do think that, you know, there's a lot of challenges and there's a lot of having to be reactionary to things, but there's also a lot of good things happening.
Oh, sure. And you know what? Any new job is hard. I mean, you know, it's not like, you know, it's not about expecting somebody to walk in the park. It's, it's difficult. You know, work is hard. But that's, that's fine. I mean, I'm used to working hard. So I just, you know, that, that's the only thing in my mind is like, you know, if I'm lucky enough to, you know, secure the job, could I watch enough Youtubes and walk in there with a semblance of, you know, at least an understanding of what to, what, what sort of what to do, you know, as far as, but, no. Like I say, the stuff I've learned so far is, it's made, made perfect sense to me. So and I assume anybody walking into it, even if they had municipal or county experience, would still, your town's going to be different than other people's towns. And more importantly, people's personalities are different than other people's personalities. When it's all said and done, a lot of that, a lot of that is going to, what's going to happen is how you can, how you can deal with different personalities and things like that. So when it's said and done, people's skills are probably almost as important as the technical skills, you know?
Yeah, that's for sure. John, do you have other questions for us?
No, I think that's about it. I, I do appreciate your guys' time and considering me for the job. It was nice to see Ed and John again, and as well as the rest of you.
Does anybody on the call have any additional questions for John? John, if you were selected for the position, how, how soon do you think that you'd be available for a start?
Yeah. You know, I have been there eighteen years. They've been awful, they've been awful nice to me. But I have to balance your guys' needs with theirs. I think when Ed and I and John talked about it a little bit, you know, I was hoping that I could give them three weeks, but I, you know, I'd feel, this is like a busiest time for us there. So I'd feel, I would feel guilty giving less than that, you know?
So it would be three weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to give, I'd like to give them, you know, when I, you know, assuming I'm the person, I'd like to be at least to be able to give them three weeks. It's, 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 that, that would, that would be fair.
Great. Well, John, thank you very much. It was very nice to meet you. And we'll obviously be back in touch after the other interview.
Great. Thank you, guys. Thanks for taking the time. And I really, I really enjoyed meeting you all, my neighbors.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, so we'll be John, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep, bye-bye now.
Take care.
Okay, everybody, we can, if you want, we can just take a little bit of a break. I believe that unless Regina happens to be there.
No, but I can, if you want, I can go out and see if she was, or would like to sign on early.
Okay. Anybody have any comments about the process in terms of wanting to change anything? Or you have to be somewhat similar, but if anybody wants to make a recommendation, happy to entertain that. Everybody's good?
Chris had brought up a point about if we had some kind of a score sheet so that we could each, based on their responses to these questions, have, have rated it.
Okay. Okay.
Right, Chris?
Well, it was a question that I thought about it a little late, actually.
But it's still doable, so why don't we just take each of these questions? And I find it easier to not have too many numbers to work with. So either score them from zero to three or zero to five? And that's something we can still do if you want to just.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I was taking notes, so I, you know, I feel comfortable.
So what, what would you prefer, zero to three or zero to five?
Let's keep it simple. Three is fine.
Okay, zero to three. So let's just take a moment and do that if you want. And, or you can do it after the fact, but I'm just going to do that now while we're waiting already.
Yeah, for ourselves. And then when we finish the second one, we can, we can talk.
Yeah. But we are not making a decision tonight, are we? Is that?
We are not. Unless you would like to vote to move forward in some way. But there's a number of steps before any sort of approval anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and especially with a meeting coming up on Tuesday, I don't see any need to, to make that decision tonight. Yeah.
Okay. Is this meeting being recorded?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So theoretically, Matt would be able to watch it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just let us know when she's on the call.
Still do.
This is my first time doing an interview via Zoom. Done it before.
Well, I've had to do it at work a lot lately.
You miss that interpersonal stuff, you know?
I know. I was just saying, I volunteered last night at a vaccine clinic in North Hampton. And everybody's so grateful, everybody's saying the same thing. I just can't wait for this to be over. Everybody's so done. Just very.
You miss even shaking hands with the person, you know, simple things.
Especially what I do too. It's just so, you know, sometimes very sad and stuff. You can't even like offer support and, you know, give someone a hug. It's just really difficult. And they can't even have any type of, you know, wake or, you know, it's just really hard all around.
I thought the roads cleaned up really well, this, with all this snow. I thought, great job.
They did, yeah, really good.
Good job. Our street is off of Moosebrook, which ends up being a dirt road. And there's a water crossing on the bottom before it opens up. And I was going to work this morning and I'm going behind a town truck who's spreading the salt, sand. And, and I was thinking, my husband hit that pothole pretty bad. It's a hard, you know, place. It probably should have some type of little bridge. But, um, anyway, the town truck went and stayed there. So I was like, oh, poor guy.
Yeah, I know that. I walk, I walk that road a little bit.
Yeah. It is nice. I, it's my, I've been snow shoeing every morning.
Before work?
Before work.
You are motivated.
It's a, it's a necessity. It's the only piece I get.
Go, go.
Who's that? The little kitty cat?
Oh, yes. Can't be quiet during a meeting.
Hi. So it sounds like you went signing in rather than joining the meeting. Yeah. And, and sometimes if you, if it's not on your tablet or laptop, you'll get that. So, yeah, you might get a message that says, watch meeting. And you can go ahead and do that. Okay, and then where the meeting ID was, where you had eight eight six three six eight nine two two five nine? No, no, go, I want you to go, get out of it, and I want you to go to zoom.us. Issues getting to the meetings, I'm working through those.
Yeah, thank you.
Meeting ID, eight eight six six three six five two one five nine. Correct. Watch meeting. Open to reading. Enter meeting password, oh four six nine six three. Yep. Yep. Take a look at my, take a look at my look. Okay. Yeah, I'm still here. Yep. And you're in. I just have to admit you now, so. All right, success.
Great.
Now, okay, Gina's in. Now I just have to wait a few seconds.
I am unmuted. Are you, do you hear me?
Yes. Yeah. Hi Regina.
Good evening, Regina.
Hi, everyone.
Hi Regina.
You're welcome. Thank you for interest in the position. We have a list of questions and I know you were provided with that. My name is Rainey Groden. We met, I came up to say hello. Thank you for helping us as the interim. I'm going to let the other select board members and people on the call introduce themselves.
Chris Valls.
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
I'm Francine Tishman.
Hi Francine.
Nice to meet you, Regina.
Thanks.
We also have Ken Cole, who's from our finance committee.
Hi Regina, we met on a Zoom.
Yes, hi.
And then John Martin.
Hi Regina, how are you?
I can't see you.
You can't?
No.
Some people would say that's an advantage.
Oh, yes. Hi. How are you?
Good, yourself?
Good, thank you.
Anyway, so we'll go ahead and start in with the questions. I'll, we'll be taking turns just asking the questions, but you have had a chance to look at them. So first of all, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be the town accountant for Southampton.
Um, well, I've been in for a not-for-profit accounting probably since nineteen ninety-four. I lived in New York for nineteen years and mostly worked in public health nonprofits, doing grants and contracts management, grant reporting, budgeting, variance reporting for the organization, routine accounting, bookkeeping. I've had some experience with payroll administration, benefits administration, various audits, workers comp, unemployment. In the for-profit area, I've had sales tax audit and a 401K audit that I've had to complete every year. So that's just some of my general background. More recently, I was employed at CISA in South Deerfield for two and a half years as their financial manager. And that was thirty hours a week. And then from there, I moved on to a fifteen office dental practice in Manchester, Connecticut. And that was for profit as the sole accountant for that eighteen million dollar organization. So that's generally one of my experiences. And my background is also, I have an undergraduate degree in journalism and film, which was documentary film, and an MBA in finance. And why would I like to be the town accountant? Well, I've had some exposure to the position twenty-four hours a week. What I like about it is it's somewhat new enough for me to remain engaged and to learn. And it's familiar enough where I get a sense of how things are done. And I feel comfortable doing the job functions that I've been doing thus far and learning more.
That's an interesting switch from journalism, documentary, and to a MBA.
Yeah, journalism doesn't pay. And back in the day, if you analyze film, each fade out is very expensive. Like things like, you know, fade outs and fade ins. I was on a student budget and, you know, it didn't work financially for me. I still am a photographer and am going through about twenty-five years of photos, trying to get them jik lead and maybe have a couple of entries in a group show. But that's more still photography than video or film.
Great, thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the next question then. What are some of the skills that you believe you would, would make you a good match for the job in Southampton? And then there's a part two to that. Is this a position that you feel you can grow in professionally, learn additional skills, and expand your accounting knowledge?
Yes, but to answer your question fully, I have prior experience in accounting, I have prior experience in budgeting and in audit oversight and preparation, in writing justifications for expenses that need some explanation, in doing cash flow projections. I'd say I have intermediate experience with Excel, which in some software applications, I've had to import and export information. There is an, there is an Excel export function in the software that we're using in the town of Southampton. It requires a little tweaking. And I think generally I have a good spidey sense about when something is an outlier or doesn't pass my sniff test, doesn't have, I don't have a good spidey sense about it. And I usually bring it, for the few things that have come to my attention, I've brought them to Ed's attention for his input. And maybe he has the institutional knowledge that I lack for certain things. And then, yes, as I mentioned earlier, I think there's enough newness to this position where I could learn and grow and remain engaged, and there's enough familiarity with this position where I'm not going to be completely overwhelmed and at a loss for what to do.
Okay, thank you.
Good. All right, so a couple, another two-parter question. We kind of, kind of like two-part questions here. But if you could describe a specific work experience that you've had where your, both your organizational and your interpersonal skills kind of contributed to a successful outcome. But at the same time, a similar occasion where you wish you would have done things differently, where either something in the organization or the interpersonal skills that you were using didn't make things go the way you wanted. So if that's clear?
It's vague enough that I can answer it. So I was thinking about this and I'd say the last job, the nonprofit job that I had at AIDS Connecticut in Hartford, we did a lot of rapid rehousing. And that has a very tight timeline. It's five business days from a completed rental application to get a check to a landlord to get somebody housed. And either they're homeless or they're coming from a motel situation. And those motel situations are not very good. But we were getting a lot of incomplete applications. We're missing signatures. I was getting landlord names that didn't jive with the W nines that I was getting. I was getting rental contracts for addresses that didn't match to where the unit was allegedly happening. There were caseworker signatures missing. So my concern was the external eye, if we were ever visited upon by HUD and a deep dive into the applications and making sure that the money that we were given was being spent properly and that we had the documentation to match that, those expenditures. So I had to meet with the caseworker manager and show her recent examples of things that were lacking. And I came up with a top, like a Dave Letterman's top ten reasons why your application is incomplete to the caseworkers. And, you know, number one, signatures, number two. And so we just went down the list and I, I said, you know, until you get more familiar with what I am looking for, you should refer to this checklist every single time you submit an application to me. And I said, that way we can, you know, the, the individual being housed thinks that their application is complete. But what they don't know is internally, it's not. So they're expecting a check in five days and it's not happening. So we, we got the turnaround to be much faster. And even though the application was incomplete, it felt more complete when I had all the missing information. So that both the caseworker and the client felt like the rapid turnaround was actually happening in a way that they were expecting. So that, that was a good example. And then just communicating, being, being very communicative with both the case manager supervisor and individual case managers, because we saw, we had some that were from other organizations that were not ours. We were managing money for other organizations. So there was a little bit of a communication process involved with that. And then another situation that, well, I can think of a couple. I've given this example twice already to a couple people. But I was working in a syringe exchange program in the South Bronx. And we had a client who came in very upset and wanted a MetroCard. And what some of these clients are doing, some of them are active substance users and are taking their MetroCards, cashing them in so they can buy a tiny hit of whatever, usually heroin. And I was the only person in the office there. I was not trained in social work or anything, but I felt like I had to manage the situation and I gave him a MetroCard. And that is, one of the philosophies in harm reduction is no judgment. So you don't judge people if they're using, you don't judge people if they're not using, you don't judge people if they pick up after years of not using. So I gave him a three-dollar MetroCard and didn't judge on how he was going to use it. But I personally felt like it was a dangerous situation. And I guess I was willing to take the consequences if I gave out the MetroCard inappropriately or without proper documentation because of the transaction value and because of the situation that I felt I was in, where I felt a little threatened.
Interesting. Tough place to be.
Yeah.
So Regina, what is your level of experience with the municipal accounting? And how would you go about improving your knowledge for this position?
My only experience has been this temp position with the town of Southampton. I've learned some stuff while I've been there. I've read up on the open meeting law. I've taken the training, the online training for conflict of interest. I've learned a little bit about the various contracts for police and fire as it pertains to time sheets, which I review. It's my understanding that there are courses offered at UMass or online probably now to become certified as a certified governmental accountant, which I would take to gain more knowledge. I would definitely attend meetings, even if they were not required as part of my job, just to learn more about the interconnectivity between different departments and the bottlenecks that might happen and how we can work around those. Does that answer your question fully? And I, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I have, I guess latterly, I have some nonprofit experience. So I'm accustomed to spending taxpayer money indirectly and being accountable for it and being transparent with it.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. Which of your previous experiences, though not in municipal government, do you most, do you feel most closely resembles this position and why? You sort of touched on some of it, and I thought you raised some, some good points, but if you can elaborate further, that'd be great.
I would say probably just audit oversight and prep and year-end closeout. I don't know if you do, I haven't seen you guys do monthly, quarterly, year-end closeouts, variance reporting in nonprofit, and probably grant reporting, and making sure that the money is spent the way that it should be and that everything is allocable and appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
So Regina, how do you envision your role interfacing with departments that, in town hall where you'd be working? And do you in general expect every department to be held to the same standard? And if so, how would you maintain a level of adherence to those standards?
I'm gonna read the question again. Well, I have been interacting with department heads mostly around expenditures, you know, AP warrants, and in some cases, time sheets. I think one of my goals, if I were hired, would be to streamline the timesheet process a little bit or even go to an online timekeeping system, if that's even possible. Especially with the police department, there are so many different rates and different types of overtime and allowances and everything that it, the timesheets don't accurately reflect the payments that are made because there are short weeks and long weeks and things like that. So trying to find a way with the chief to sort of make a timesheet that works for him and me would be a goal. So I think departmentally, the standard that I would hold similarly would be accuracy and mathematical accuracy and also signatures that are missing. But I think that each department has its own unique set of challenges, and there are different rules for, and different case directions for different departments. So that's one concrete example that I can give you. Does that answer it enough? Oh, adherence. Well, I have emailed folks about things that are missing and things that are lacking and I need better copies of, or, you know, missing signatures or dollar amounts that don't add up. In terms of like a repeat offender, if that's the word that I want to use, it's really about documentation and communication, so, and laying forth expectations, articulating them, meeting with someone, helping them, what occurs again, meaning again, reiterating expectations, helping them. Third attempt, maybe going to a supervisor or to Ed, if that's the next up, to just show my documented attempts at communication and explaining and next steps, if any.
Okay, good, thanks.
I'm up, I guess, huh?
Yes.
Accounting supports each department headed by independent decision-makers. You don't have a decision-making role, but you become aware that a department head did not follow protocol. How would you correct it and make certain that the same situation didn't happen again? And I think you've more or less answered that in the previous question. Do you want to add anything to that, Regina?
I, I, I think I've gone into little incidents. I think of it or a flagrant violation where there was inappropriate use of funds or personal use of something that belongs to the town. That's not, that's more of a, I think that's a level beyond me because I'm not their supervisor. I'd bring it to someone else's attention.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, next question. The accountant position is central in town government. It requires familiarity with laws and regulations, attention to detail, organizational skills, confidentiality, and adherence to operational deadlines. Can you speak to your skills in each of these areas?
Yes. I think compared to other possible candidates, I don't have an in-depth familiarity with laws and regulations, and I admit that that's my problem. However, I'm a quick read.
Regina, you're a little too close to your mic, maybe if you could, yeah, there you go.
Sorry.
Try that again, try that again, please.
Sure. I was saying that my, my probable biggest weakness in this position, if it were offered to me, would be my unfamiliarity with laws and regulations. But that I'm a quick study and a quick read. And I also know that I have the resource of the Mass Municipal Accounting Association, whatever it's called, and the courses that I would be taking to become certified. I also feel like I could probably establish a network with other town accountants more informally instead of through the association. Jen Day, for example, told me that Goshen and Covington use the same accounting software that we do. If there were an issue, I could ask them how they resolved their issue if it was similar. So informally, I could reach out to peers that way. And then attention to detail organizational skills. I think I brought a few things to Ed's attention that I just want a clarification on, and organizational skills. When I feel it's my, when I, when I have a position, I have ownership over it and I am organized and pretty organized with computer stuff. I'm pretty file organized on a computer. I use Excel a lot for my own tracking and pulling in and out of softwares I need to. Confidentiality, that hasn't really been too much of an issue. I don't think you folks participate in the open checkbook. So I'm not sure how confidential salary information is among town employees. Benefits and, and health information is not my, would not be the bailiwick of this position, but I understand that there are HIPAA concerns with personnel issues, and I would never violate anything that is supposed to be held in confidence. Same with personnel issues, if there were any that came to my attention. And adherence, adherence to operational deadlines, I think I've been pretty good. Ed, you could probably speak to this better about meeting bi-weekly warrant deadlines and adjusting my schedule as needed to make sure that those happen on time and willing to fill in in other situations to help other people out if needed. That's about it.
Okay. So as, as you know, this is actually a 30-hour-per-week position. And so how do you feel that this schedule will work for you in the long term? Is this something that you feel that you might need to require additional hours to remain in the position and stay engaged? Or is the 30-hour-per-week position seemingly satisfactory to you right now?
It's hard to gauge. I think 20, I'm at 24 hours a week now, which is mostly just processing accounts payable and posting other payroll warrants. We haven't dealt with anything about other kinds of posting revenue side, for example. I'm not sure if you're still planning to hire a part-time person to do more of the AP data entry. And I, and I think there'll probably be more hours at fiscal year end and during an audit over, audit prep and oversight. So 30 hours a week sounds reasonable if there's a part-time person also being hired. If not, it would probably need to be more hours.
That is the plan, Regina, to have another person in the office.
How many hours a week would that person be?
Ed can speak to that exactly.
Yeah, it's posted for 20 hours a week, which the previous assistant town accountant was.
Okay. And I think 30 hours should do it. And, and I understand that it's a new position if I need to work longer hours to meet a reporting deadline or an annual deadline. I understand that that's part of the job.
Good. Regina, do you have any questions for us?
I guess I have a sense of the 21 budget. If you could speak to what fiscal year '22 and '23 are looking like? Are they going to be flat budgets? Do you see contraction? Do you see an expansion?
Well, I'll let Ed start with that, and then I'll certainly invite anybody else to speak to that.
I don't see contraction. I mean, our, our here in Southampton is basically what we usually receive for additional revenues in any particular year over the previous fiscal year really usually do not cover our total cost increases. Usually those may be eaten up quickly by increases into our retirement contribution, health insurance costs. Two different school systems here. We have a regional school district, which is grades seven through 12, and we have our own school district, which is grades one through six. Sometimes they compete against each other for funding with the regional school district, depending on what they come out with for a, a budget. If four of the five towns that belong to that regional school district approve the budget and we didn't like it, or didn't want to, town meeting didn't want to approve it or didn't approve it, it makes no difference. It's, it's implemented, it's there. So, you know, from, from that instance, our local school district comes, comes in second. But, you know, I will, I will tell you that there are years when you never know what health insurance is going to do, but any growth that we may have may be eaten up by retirement, health insurance, and the schools before we get to any other departments. So even, even though the total dollars in revenues may expand, you actually could be looking at a, you know, reduction in the services offered to our residents or businesses when all is said and done. And, you know, I firmly believe that, you know, if '22 and '23, just because of what's going on in, in COVID and nationally in the state, that they'll be tight years. And, you know, then the other question is, depending on where we are, you know, would the town look at taking a possible proposition, two and a half vote to supplement the budget to town meeting and to the, the voters of Southampton? So those are challenges we've faced ever since I've come here.
How many times have you invoked Prop 2.5 and tried to get that override?
Southampton had a reputation for a while of never passing an override in spite of multiple attempts. Two years ago, the town voted in favor of an override. And prior to that, I think for at least the previous 10 to 15 years or more, they were, I would say there's been at least, I don't know, someone might know more specifically, I would say at least eight to 10 attempts that were, that failed. And there've been a variety of methods, whether it's menu override, and, you know, there's been a lot of attempts. I'll just add to what Ed said about the schools. I used to be on the Hampshire Regional School Committee, and I think that it was hard to get our hands around sometimes the budget. And it was five towns, and Southampton represents basically 50% of the students at the school. It involves students opting to go to Smith Vocational, and all that goes with that, and transportation, and quite expensive. You don't always firm on the numbers, so you're sort of working a little bit blindly sometimes. But what happens is, the budget in the past has been very aggressive or ambitious in the past. And so if four out of the five towns approve it, then Southampton is, has to go along with it. And then all the other departments have to be redistributed accordingly on a, you know, on a fixed sort of amount. On top of that, all the contractual benefits. So it made a very difficult situation and almost made it like the schools were competing with the other departments in town. In the last couple of years, we've had some really good discussions, really good regional meetings of the finance committees and the select boards of the various towns. We have a principal who's doing an exceptional job. And I think that the latest draft of the Hampshire Regional Budget came in at only 1.13% increase. That hasn't really been looked at or discussed as a community yet. But what I'm saying is, I think there's been a very concerted effort in the last couple of years by the Hampshire Regional School Committee, has done a great job, the principal, other folks in the school, to really understand the pressures that the towns are under and have really tried hard to address that.
It's unfortunate you don't have a weighted vote.
You have a. We do have a weighted vote.
You do have a vote, oh, okay.
We do have a weighted vote, yeah. But nonetheless, when it comes to approving the budget, if four out of the five towns approve it, then we are, we go along with it without, without having a choice. We could vote down the budget and then we'd have to go along. Would other people like to speak to the question that Regina asked about the upcoming two years budget?
I heard a sigh.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just hoping, and I know the, you know, the budget calls have gone out and the departments are trying to work on those, but last year, we had a very, very painful process. I think, you know, we, we got a little bit of a late start, to say the least. We didn't have a functional finance committee to help us get through the process according to our bylaws and our process. And we had more than one very, very late night on Zoom trying to balance a budget in Excel and move things around and do across-the-board cuts that were, you know, across all departments, and it was a painful process. So I'm just hoping that this year, even though the budget may be tight in terms of what we're going to be estimating from the state, you know, we can get a better handle on it earlier, certainly with a finance committee in place now and really understanding where we need to go to provide the services that we want to provide to the residents of Southampton. I mean, I think we were a little bit lucky to get some things that might have been part of a budget through the CARES Act grant, so that might diminish a few requests. But nonetheless, the requests are out there. We know we've got a variety of things to, to adjust and pay attention to. And, you know, it's going to be another challenge, for sure.
I second that.
You want to say any more, Ken? You want to say anything more about that?
No, I, you know, I think it's, it's encouraging that Regina has been in the process as our interim that she sees fit to apply for the job.
Yeah, we haven't scared her while we.
That's right.
Still time.
I just want to, I don't know if this is even a possibility, but I always think that if the accounting could have an aerial view of all the department budgets, is there ever a possibility where you could envision ways in which we could save money? And I, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know through like centralized services, I, I, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I think I don't have that view now. There's always job sharing. I don't know if that's possible with municipal government. And it sounds like you take advantage of state contracts with, with respect to purchasing. You know, there's ways in nonprofit to write grants that include people from other departments, so you can do interdisciplinary kinds of things in the nonprofit world. So when you're, when you have an eye for a grant that you're applying for, and you know that you have a department that needs money, if it's appropriate, you can write in a budget line for one person, you know, whether it's salary or expenses that need to be covered, that aren't being covered in other ways. So you can look at it from a, you know, a ground up kind of way of where the budget shortfall is and trying to find grants that would fit that and write people and expenditures in there that need to get covered, as long as they're appropriate.
Yeah. And it's just, just to add on that, I mean, my thought would be that that would be something like if we had a grant manager type thing. I mean, when we've got a lot of reporting to do to the state or the federal government, I mean, the extra time, not an extra position, but rather the time it's going to take, the extra time out of somebody's job to report to that. I mean, that is something that oftentimes could be covered through a grant line item.
My understanding is the departments do that now, probably with some input from the accounting department, but Ed can speak better to that.
Yep.
John, I'm wondering if you wanted to speak at all to that question about the upcoming budget. John was also on the finance committee before and was our liaison to finance and has been helpful very much to the finance, current finance committee, like Ken said, was fairly new. Do you want to say anything, John?
None of us. I guess what I think in relation to Regina is she seems to be able to view what we're doing now, come up with some positive suggestions in the six weeks she's been here, and maybe some areas that we can streamline and improve. And to me, for being here only six weeks and being able to come forward with that, I think kind of gives us a sense of the type person she is and the type person she will be. So I think that's, that's very much a positive. So I think although she doesn't have the municipal experience, obviously she knows about MMA and the courses and certifications. So that took some research in addition to doing the work nearly twenty four hours. So I just want to give her credit for, for doing that and bringing it to the table tonight.
Thank you. Thanks.
I would have, I would have one other question, and that is, I guess, the aspect of reportability. I know in, in looking back over your resume that you've had a number of responsibilities, but this, this is probably a reportability unlike anything that you've had in the past. Without, hopefully I'm not going out on a limb here, but you have a reserved seat right up front at the annual town meeting. And a lot of interested townspeople that are going to be asking questions of you and, and other committees, and it's a whole nother aspect that, when you think about it, it becomes a concern. Is that, is that something you're comfortable with?
It would be, the hot seat is a little bit new for me. I did have a little bit of a hot seat kind of role with the Pioneer Valley Symphony Orchestra. I was there a part-time bookkeeper. They had severe budgetary challenges.
Yeah.
They had a youth program that a lot of the parents felt really strongly about, and a lot of their other revenue sources supported the youth program. So it almost felt like a setup. One of the questions was, do you, do you, do you need each aspect, each programmatic aspect of the symphony to make money? And I said, I don't think that's the goal. I think the goal is to, at the very least, break even, but that some programs support others, and we have grants that support programs that do not make money. Now, for example, you know, they, they were charging tuition for the youth orchestra that by no means covered the cost of running the youth orchestra. And even the music fees that they were charging for printed music for chorus members were the lowest in this part of the state and probably did not fully cover the cost of the music that we were purchasing. But we had other revenue sources. We had donations. We had someone who every year donated money to buy music and to pay for royalties. So there were other ways, but I think, I think what they wanted me to say was if we were a dollar in the red, we were canceling their program, and I didn't say that. And I knew that, you know, the youth program was probably the most charged of all the programs that we offered. It was a resource. It was a way to learn music, and it was an after-school program for a lot of kids who did not have a lot of other resources in some cases. So that was a little hot seat-y. Some, I'm, I'm used to couching my words. I think what I would feel most comfortable with is doing a deep dive into all the expenses that have hit the various accounts before I arrived, because I kind of get a sense of what is happening. I'd like to do a deep dive in all of the accounts for the transactions that happened prior to my arrival, because I didn't, I didn't see them. So I, I want to get a better sense of everything being in the right place and making sense. And I can speak intelligently to questions that are asked that way. Honestly, in twenty four hours, I've really just been dealing with the present and not really diving too much into the past in terms of charges that have happened on the budget.
Okay.
I think the position, you know, I think it's, it's a small town, and I think that we have department heads, very dedicated department heads, and I think that being, is being accurate, like you said, was very important, making sure that protocols are followed, making sure that there's fairness between departments, having good people skills, knowing where your lane is, not overstepping a department head, but at the same time, giving information that will be helpful in decision-making. So I think that those are the things I think that are important. The more you learn about the budget and the various line items, the, I think, more comfortable it generally is to be in the hot seat at a town meeting. But that, the accountant does play a significant role in the town meeting. Ken is absolutely right. In terms of verifying signatures, people ask questions and being able to have the the Excel spreadsheet and be able to answer them accurately is important. So what are the questions come to mind, Regina, for any of us?
I think you touched a little bit on this, but it is a small town, and I'm just wondering what the challenges are other than budgetary, working in a small town as the town accountant. What can I expect, other than the hot seat at the annual meeting?
I think it's, I mean, money's a big, money's a big one, having enough money to be able to provide what we, you know, what we'd like to do, you know, there's so many things between services for seniors and a greenway and public safety complex and fixing roads. And, I mean, my challenge is always wanting to do more and always having, you know, the pressure of having the funds or coming up with the funds. But, you know, we have a beautiful town, and we have a lot of people interested in open space and a new technology committee and a new grants committee, and I think that there's a lot of people that are volunteering a lot of the town time to make the town better. I think there's the usual tension between building and conservation. There's the usual tension around trying to increase business without a, you know, public sewer or the infrastructure to do that. So I think there's a lot of things that are typical for a lot of towns. But there's a lot of wonderful things about Southampton. I feel fortunate to have landed here. So who else?
Just to, just to say, I think one thing that, you know, the challenge in a way of, of a small town like this is that, you know, we may have whatever, twenty or so employees in town hall, for example, but you're, you're basically, whatever your job is, you're the front line. I mean, there, there isn't usually too many places you can delegate it. Because of our structure, the departments are like a one or two-person operation at best. And so, you know, you're kind of a jack of all, all trades with whatever you've got to do, because you know your work, you may not know Department X's work and vice versa. And so it's, it's sometimes hard, I think, to try and figure out how you could maybe make things more effective or more responsive to citizens' inquiries when there is such distinct, I don't know, kind of, I don't know what I want to say, distinct boundaries in a sense, for lack of a better word, between departments, just because of the technical things that they do. And so that, I think that if I were working in that area, I mean, in town hall, I think I would find that a bit challenging, where, you know, you couldn't necessarily say, hey, look, I'm really short here. I'm hitting a deadline. We've done the best we can, but can I borrow somebody from, you know, Office X to help me do this? And, you know, that may not be likely, likely to do.
I just wanted to add to that, because it's similar to what she said. The other thing I think is challenging, I mean, I've had four jobs as either manager or director, and I'm used to a nonprofit where everybody reports to me. In town hall, you know, this one reports to the, you know, their board, this one reports to the board, these two report to the voters, these people report to Ed. So in terms of our reporting structure and all that, I think that becomes a challenge sometimes, but that's the current situation that we have, is that there's a reporting structure that's varied, and there are a lot of implications with that.
But one of the unifying factors in all of that is accounting, because everybody has to go through that door.
Yep.
Okay. And so, and I, and I just want to mention something about what, what Ken mentioned in terms of the hot seat. What really is that you have to have the information available and, and to be able to answer, answer the questions. It's, it's not like you're being challenged because you made a decision. What accounting does is process decisions of other departments.
That's right.
You just come up with, you know, the explanation and the background that people are looking for.
Yep.
Anybody else want to add to the question from Regina around specific challenges with Southampton?
I, I think just to follow up with Francine is saying, this is probably a very popular position in town hall, because everybody goes to you, and with, with favors or questions or whatever it is. So I think you'll be challenged when people come to you and ask you for things that you can't do, and that you're going to have to explain it to them. But I think more so, people just want to know some answers on the budget, on their specific line items and in accounting. And I think you could be a real asset to people to sit down, take a few minutes, explain it to them, so next time they know the answer to the question, because I, I think that'll be real important, and I think this position is, is that type of position.
Any other comments about that? Regina, do you have any other questions for us?
At this time.
Okay. All right. Well, the other thing I just wanted to ask is if you were selected for the position, when do you feel you'd be able to start?
I'm completely flexible. I'm, I'm honestly still getting a little bit of unemployment, so I'm not in a rush. So if your timeline needs to get extended for whatever reason, I'm fine with that. If you need me to start two weeks from now, I can work with that as well.
Okay.
You have, Regina, do you have any responsibility, financial responsibility to your temp employer? If you
I believe there's a contract that Ed signed, and there is probably a fee. If, if I haven't met the terms of the contract, there's a fee to the town. So you may want to ride that contract out to avoid the fee. That's your call. I don't know what the dollar amount is or what the terms are, but Ed can probably speak to that.
Yeah, we actually have, Ken, we have that information, okay?
Right.
Yep. Yeah, we are, we have obligations because of the, the connection that was made through the temp agency.
Okay.
Other questions? Anybody else want to speak to or ask Regina a question at this point?
No.
Nope. Okay. Well, Regina, thank you very much. Very nice to talk with you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yep. And so we'll be back in touch next week, okay?
Okay, great. Have a great weekend.
You too.
Good day, Regina.
Thank you.
Thanks, Regina.
Bye.
Any closing comments from anyone on the meeting?
No, I was a little leery about doing an interview by Zoom, but I think it worked out well, and I'm glad that we were able to give them the questions ahead of time. I think it made for a smoother and faster flowing interview. They were prepared, and, you know, I think we got some pretty good information out of both candidates.
Yep. I've found that doing interviews lately, it's nice to see people without a mask on.
Yeah, that too. Yeah, you kind of forget about that. Yeah, it's true.
So where do we go? Where does it go from here?
So what we'll do is we'll end up adding up and scoring the questions that we have, and the, it's on the agenda for Tuesday night's meeting to have a further discussion. We have the option right now to make a recommendation. We have, obviously, there's background checks, there's references to check, there's a contract that would have to be negotiated. Is there anybody that wants to put forth any nomination or anything at this particular point? Do you want to think about it, add it up, ask Matt to perhaps?
That was my suggestion, if Matt has a chance to take a look at the, you know, the interviews and as if he were a participant. I would be interested in, in his feedback as well.
Yep, I would agree with that.
Okay, then.
Can I have, can I ask one other question?
Sure, absolutely, Ken.
Were these the two finalists or the, or two applicants?
I'll ask, let John or Ed answer that.
We interviewed a number of candidates, Ken, and these were the two that Ed and I thought were the, the best for the finalist position. We brought them forward.
This question, I guess, would be mostly for Ed. Are you concerned, Ed, at all about the lack of municipal experience in both of these candidates?
In a world, I would be. I think we're at a point, just because of the thirty hours a week and what that figures out to be, you know, on an annual basis, that we're a little bit limited. And I don't think there's a lot of candidates out there anyway, looking to move. If this were a Friday forty hour week at the current rate, it would probably fall into, you know, sixty-five, sixty-eight thousand dollars. And at that point, I think you might get some interest for, from some assisted town accountants in, you know, some other possibly towns or cities that would be entitled to make the move to town accountant and and make a little bit more. So I, I think that lifts us a little bit. I mean, in, in a perfect world, it'd be great to get somebody with municipal accounting experience and software experience. I just don't think we're going to find that.
And if I can just add something, we had one candidate that we interviewed, very qualified, but he misinterpreted the amount of hours in the pay. He thought it was going to come out forty hours at the, the pay level. So once we interviewed him, we were really upfront with him, saying, it is only thirty hours. And here's the annualized, is this really what you want? He went, oh, no, no, sorry. I, I thought it was at this level. So, you know, I think that backs up what Ed said.
Yeah, and, and that killer person actually had, you know, two applications in that, you know, he was moving forward within the interview process for a considerable amount of more money.
And am I right in the fact that our previous accountant came to our town without prior municipal experience also? So it's, you know, it's conceivable that the right person with the right, you know, skill sets would be able to have the resources and the mentorship to be able to learn the various things that are needed?
Yeah, and I think like John said, and I've got a background in accounting, accounting's accounting's accounting. You just need to know the, you know, the idiosyncrasies of that particular type of accounting. You just need to know the, you know, the idiosyncrasies of that particular type of accounting.
Right. Yeah. He said it's basically the same concepts. They just function under different systems.
Yeah, unless you're going to do cost accounting, which is, is different, but you know.
Right.
Excuse me.
Yeah, right.
Just have to read the Massachusetts, us and regulations that go along with it.
Okay. So if there are no other questions or suggestions, the, do you have anything else, Ken, you wanted to ask?
No, not at this point.
Okay. So what we'll do then is we'll ask everybody to count up. I'll contact Matt and just inform him that they happened and not discuss them, but encourage him to access the recording, which will be posted as of when, Ed. Can we get Jen to get it up as soon as possible?
Yeah, it's, it's now weekend, so I don't know how quick that'll be, but I'll ask them to get it up as soon as possible.
All right. I'll try to ask them to please try to access that before Tuesday night. We'll discuss what scores came up and if someone would like to make a recommendation at that particular point. Do we have the option of reaching out before Tuesday night and ask for the references? Or is, or have other, have they notified? Well, in the case of John, previous, current employee, or do we have the authorization to reach out to references if in fact the references involve current employer?
We don't, but I can reach out to both candidates and find that out.
Okay. I think that, you know, that might
Wait until you made an, an offer was made.
Well, maybe not the offer, but I mean, make a selection first. I mean, wouldn't you reach out only to check references on the one you're looking for?
Right. But then, once you make the offer to that person, then you check their references. They're contingent on the
Right.
Yeah.
Contingency. Yep.
Right.
A question, really. So I interviewed them twice, both of them, and I've got my own opinion and I know who in my mind I think would be the strongest candidate. What do you want me to do with that information or nothing?
You know, if the select board isn't at this, tonight, interested in speaking up and saying, I would prefer this particular candidate, you want to wait? Give Matt a chance to actually access if he can, think about it, add up your scores. Then you can do one of two things, John. You can write up a recommendation and send it to Ed who can send it out to the select board. Or I believe you're going to be on the call on Tuesday anyway, to be part of the disability presentation. You can just let us know then, since I think at that point, my hope is that we're going to come up with our nomination or recommendation on Tuesday night.
Okay, so I'll, I'll do that then.
Okay, that'd be good. Okay. Everybody ready to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Make a motion?
Really, before you do that, do you have to ask for open time for the public, which is on the agenda?
Oh, it is. Thank you for, I'm going to miss you, John. All right. I'm sorry about that. Open time for the public. The select board reserves time for open time for the public and I won't read through the whole thing, but is there anybody from the public who would like to be recognized? Is anybody raising their hand? Everybody's on mute. So is anybody?
Unmute themselves if you'd like.
Okay, it looks like everybody is quiet. So
Yeah, they can go to, they can do the chat if they want to get on.
Yeah. But they also can unmute themselves, is what Ed just said. And it doesn't look like that's the case. So in that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second it.
Francine and then Chris, all in favor?
Tishman, aye.
Ball's aye.
And Groden, aye. Thank you again, John, Ken, Ed. Have a nice weekend, everyone, and we'll see you on Tuesday night.
Okay.
Take care.
All right.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.